Our agenda is the, uh, our devotion. Mr. Crawford, would you lead us in our invocation?
That's about the prayer. Father God, we're so grateful that we have been so blessed with health and a recovering economy that has brought us here tonight. That not only we make decisions for the betterment of our county and our citizens, but Father, we just thank you that you have been so good to us. May our hearts and minds be clear tonight and focused upon your will in all the decisions we make, for we pray this in the mighty name of Christ, and amen.
Would you lead us in the prayer?
Thanks to flag, to the Lord. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you made me see this. You did that with gusto, thank you. Looks like we have a lot of smiling faces in our seats, so I will ask our clerk to take the roll, please. So everyone checked in. Mr. Pierce. Madam Clerk, take the roll.
Twenty-two present, two accent.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the minutes from our previous commission meeting on June twenty-ninth. Those have been spread on your desk and sent to you electronically. Do I have to have a motion of Mr. Crawford, Secretary of Commerce, or Mr. Parker Road to accept as presented in a discussion? Seeing none of them, they have a signify to say aye.
Aye.
Those both know, the ayes have it, the motion is adopted, as are the minutes of meeting. Uh, next up, we have public comment, and Commissioner Crawford will bring forward the list, and, uh, as, uh, within our rules, as you know, we allow at least thirty minutes for public comment. We try to allow our visitors and people visiting with us three minutes each. I noticed we have thirteen people signed up for public comment. We'll try to go the whole three minutes, uh, we won't, uh, if you're making a point, and I ask you to wrap it up if you would. We don't want to impose on the points you're trying to make, and we want to give you sufficient time to make those points. So the, we will recess. Four of us have come in, and first up is Mr. Mike Henkel. Mr. Henkel, would you come forward, give us your name and address for our electronic prayer?
My name's Mike Henkel. I'm at three oh one Carroll Hill Drive in Quattle. Why I'm here today is to talk to y'all about our land taxes. I know you want to raise them again, but I have talked to a lot of people, and I've got something I want to ask y'all before you vote on raising our taxes. I have, uh, been talking to a few people, and, uh, they feel like I do, everybody needs to share in this expense, not just landowners. And I have, uh, come to this conclusion. Sullivan County has got a hundred and eighty-three thousand cars registered. Hundred eighty-three thousand cars and people on them that's registered. So why not let everybody take an expense and share this expense, just landowners? Put a wheel tax, because you've got people that rent and don't have to pay taxes. You figure a hundred eighty-three thousand cars, and all they do is drive, and they rent, and they don't have to pay land taxes? Why not share this between the whole county? Why not everybody take responsibility? Not just landowners, it's not fair. I mean, I'm gonna fix the income, and here you go raising it again, so I've got to pay more. But let's, let's put this burden on everybody, not just the landowners, it's not fair. So what do you think? How many agree? I mean, just think about it. Raise your hand. Do you think everybody should, uh, share in this expense, not just landowners? Look at all these people that drive cars. Lotting rent, living home, they ain't got no taxes paid. Let's share it between the whole county. Let's make Blountle, like Trump says, make Blountle great again. I mean, come on. And I've heard from all over Sullivan County, I've talked to a lot of people. They say, everybody down here, y'all playing politics games. Republicans staying together, and Democrats staying together. And what one or two says, everybody's a follower. Let's go do what's happening in Worcester. This Sullivan, let's make Sullivan County great, a good place to live. Why, why, why? I mean, come on. Let's let everybody share this expense, not landowners. It's fair. Hundred eighty-three thousand cars, and that's probably more, because this survey was taken a year or so ago. So I suggest, before you raise these taxes and make landowners pay it all, let's put this burden on everybody. Everybody. And that's all I've got to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, you've had three minutes exactly. Thank you. That, uh, thanks, Simon. I, I know we all appreciate the comments and people, but if, uh, we can move on a little quicker if we don't have applause, but, uh, if you're overwhelmed, go ahead. Uh, next up, Tracy Huffman. Is nothing, welcome.
Hello, I am Tracy Huffman of Cohole Road in Blountle, Tennessee. I'm a Sullivan County parent and teacher. This past week, I reached out to commissioners and board members and had the opportunity to talk to both. I know the position you have is not always easy, and I do appreciate your contribution to our community. I am told that commissioners and board members alike both agree that teachers need a salary increase. I'm gonna quickly give you a few examples while this is important. My daughter, when she was in third grade, she had a wonderful math teacher. The teacher was led by students and parents. The teacher was an effective teacher and is now at Kingsport City. My daughter also, while in elementary school, had an art teacher whose artwork we still have on display in our home. That teacher is now at Kingsport City. This past school year, my niece was in second grade, had a teacher she adored, wrote her notes, drew her pictures, and I bet you can, you know, I'm going to say, that teacher is now at Kingsport City. So, if the commissioners and the board members both agree that Sullivan County needs to increase its salary to be more competitive with surrounding districts, what's the problem? If I understand correctly, the debate comes on where the education funding is coming from. In the past, education funding has primarily came from property taxes, which is a set amount. The commission, I believe, is wanting to vote tonight to change that to sales tax, which is an amount that fluctuates. So I'm going to ask a question that I hope is answered when I'm finished speaking. If our budget is chosen to come from sales tax, does our budget run the risk of not being fully funded? In closing, I would like to say that I appreciate all of you all, that I hope that we will come together in an agreement, and I invite you next year to come into our schools to talk to our teachers and observe the effect of your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, that was a short time, thank you. Uh, next up, Angie Jeffers. Welcome, Ms. Jeffers.
Angie Jeffers, East Lee Drive, Kingsport, Tennessee. As a graduate of Sullivan Central, I reap the benefits of being a Sullivan County student. As the parent of a student, I gain an appreciation for the knowledge and dedication of my colleagues. As a property owner, I see the value of quality schools as a deciding factor for families. As a twenty-seven-year employee, I have had the privilege of being a stepping stone in the education of many. Tonight, I'm representing all these facets. I personally want to thank each and every one of our commissioners for your support of education. There is no other entity that impacts Sullivan County as much as our schools. Our county is making progress and will only continue to do so with the commissioner's support and funding to accomplish future goals. This county is the ninth largest in the state of Tennessee, but is only ranked seventy-fourth as the best district in which to teach, based largely on teacher pay. Studies show when education is put first, communities thrive attracting new residents and businesses. Unfortunately, students receiving a quality education from Sullivan County schools are choosing teaching opportunities in neighboring counties due to the different, and pay, difference in pay scales. My daughter is a third-year teacher in a neighboring district and already earns as much as I do with an EDS degree and twenty-seven years' experience. I'm curious, what is the commission's financial priorities? The commission needs to continue funding education using property tax revenue. Approximately ninety-five million dollars was collected last year with a ninety-five point five percent collection rate. These are solid funds. The newspaper reported last year's sales tax revenues countywide totaled more than five fifty-nine point one million dollars, compared to nearly fifty-two point nine million the previous year. That is a difference of six point two million dollars. The bottom line is, sales tax fluctuates. Therefore, sales tax revenues are not reliable. Our school system needs the stability of property tax revenue, not to mention the roughly thirty-six million dollar difference between the two. It is too risky for the commission to take property tax from our schools and raise sales tax projections to make up the difference. The essential question, what is the county commission's financial priorities? Keep funding education with property tax revenues that are proven to be dependable. Our future, our schools, need to be your priority. Prove with your vote that you value our schools, our hard-working teachers, and most importantly, our children. Thank you.
I believe next is Katie McGee. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Katie McGee. I live on Falling Leaf Drive in Kingsport. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I've had the privilege of serving as a teacher for nearly a decade and a half, and all of my time serving has been spent with the students of Sullivan County schools. During my tenure with Sullivan County, the teachers in our district have not received a significant pay increase. During my time in Sullivan County, I've also seen many talented, wonderful educators leave our school district to seek higher pay in neighboring districts, such as Washington County, Bristol, Kingsport, or Johnson City. I hold a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in educational leadership. A teacher with the same experience that I have and the same education that I have could choose to teach in one of these neighboring districts and earn five thousand thirty-one dollars, seven thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars, ten thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars, or eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars more per year in these districts respectively. To put it in another context, a teacher with my same credentials could earn between ten to twenty-three point seven percent more annually in a district just a few miles down the road. I ask you to look at the faces in this room and to consider the teachers in this district who teach or have taught your children, your grandchildren, your friends, your family, and your neighbors. Teachers who choose to serve in Sullivan County schools. Teachers who dedicate hours upon hours outside our contracted time to serve our students. Teachers who spend hundreds of dollars of our own pay on supplies for our classroom or for our students who are in need. Teachers who constantly strive to learn and better ourselves in continuing our education every year. Talented teachers who work to collectively bring Sullivan County to a gross score rank of four out of five overall and five out of five in English language arts according to our last date data. Teachers who work just as hard, who are just as talented and just as dedicated as our friends in neighboring districts, yet our pay does not reflect this. During the past year, some neighboring districts hired a third party to instruct their virtual learning students online. Many teachers in Sullivan County, myself, teachers in this room and those watching at home included, continued to teach on two platforms, both virtually and in person, all year long, doubling our normal workload. We essentially work two jobs all year, it's still a fraction of the pay of our peers around us. You didn't hear complaints, because that's what Sullivan County teachers do. We show up for our kids, and we give our best for them every single day. You have the power to keep your effective, talented, and dedicated teachers in Sullivan County educating our children. Please vote to improve a budget that pays the teachers in your district a salary that we both deserve and have worked so hard to earn. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Mike Wilson. Welcome, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Wilson, I live on Land Scott Drive in Kingsport. Just want to talk a, a little bit from a couple of different perspectives. First of all, I'm a principal at Miller Perry. I'm also a parent. I have a six-year-old daughter that was in kindergarten at Rock Springs, and my son will be a senior at West Ridge. So I just want to talk real quickly about what, how hard the teachers have worked during this pandemic. Uh, it really was amazing to see how hard they worked. We asked them to do something that had never been done before, teach online, teach in a hybrid setting, teach in person, and every time, they stepped up to the plate and did an amazing job. And I can speak from personal experience. Unfortunately, I was on quarantine, my wife and my daughter. I witnessed firsthand my wife teaching eighth grade ELA online. My daughter, online, uh, with her teacher, kindergarten. And guys, it was tough, but I'm telling you, our teachers stepped up to the plate. I would put our teachers up against any school system in the area, in the state, or in the nation. Guys, it's time to pay our teachers what they deserve. And I'm asking you to invest in our teachers, because ultimately, you're investing in the future, you're investing in our students. So, um, think about that, because these teachers deserve it. Thanks.
Next up, Jennifer Wilson.
I signed up after my husband.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you. Uh, next, Zane Vanover. Welcome, Mr. Vanover.
Thank you. For some reason, these teachers sit at the corner back there, huh? Like old times, I guess. I'm, uh, Zane Vanover, my address is eleven oh one New Beesonwell Road. I'm the, currently the, I serve as the Sullivan County Farm Bureau President. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Venable, and, and how the commission for your work. I know it's hard to please a hundred and sixty thousand people, but some way, I know you'll do it. Appreciate the opportunity to say a few words here tonight. For the past one hundred years, Farm Bureau has been known as the voice of agriculture. And I'm just here to try to voice some concerns from our farmers here tonight. I'm not here to complain, but if you don't speak up for your industry when the time comes, and if policies don't go your way, it's your own fault. We all learned at an early age, especially on the farm, that life's not fair, but there's no reason taxes shouldn't be fair. We feel like farmers, landowners, are paying a disproportionate amount of tax in this county and share too much of the tax burden when it comes to property taxes. Of course, green bill tax codes helped some, but that was repraised last year, and there was an increase in that last year already. Many farmers in our county already pay between a thousand and two thousand dollars a month on average for property taxes. That's twelve to twenty-four thousand dollars a year. And you go adding in your own health expenses, insurance, uh, utilities, that's a pretty big hole to dig out of. And with decreased farm income, the way it's been the last twenty years, that's not a very pretty picture to look at. Congress and the General Assembly have sent unprecedented levels of funding to local governments and local education systems. By Tennessee Farm Bureau's count, Sullivan County has received over thirty million dollars in the school district, almost thirty-two million dollars. While much of that money is earmarked for specific uses, that's a lot of money that could be used to relieve some of our tax burden, or at least prevent an increase. I know one item being discussed here tonight is equalization of teacher pay. That should be a no-brainer. Sullivan County teachers are as good as any of those in the city systems that should be paid accordingly. Tennessee Farm Bureau is a big supporter of Ag and CTE education. I think that could be addressed without a tax increase. And in accordance with that, we would like to see some equalization in the tax burden. Property taxes just can't keep increasing and have any farms left. No one, especially our farmers, wants to see a new tax, but some form of a wheel tax with a cap on it would be preferable to future property tax increases, in the eyes of most farmers. That would help share the load among those who pay little or no property taxes. And in conclusion, I want to reiterate that in no way are our farmers trying to shirk any responsibility, just the opposite. They take pride in contributing to our society. So I'm asking you, when you're faced with major funding decisions, whether it's new schools, roads, jails, or anything else, please keep our taxpayers and our farmers... please keep our taxpayers and our farmers first and foremost on your mind. I know you will. Please just remind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vanover. And next on the list is Vicki Robinson-Harris. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you, honorable mayor and all the commissioners for allowing us an opportunity to talk and to speak with you briefly. First of all, I would like to just dispel a little bit of a myth that a lot of public thinks about educators, and that is that we get paid all year long. And we don't. We're on a 10-month salary and we, the two months that everybody says, oh, they're out for two months, well, we don't get paid for those two months. And that's why a lot of educators, including myself, who is now retired, has always worked two and three jobs to make up the difference for that two months that we did not earn a salary. But during this time, not only do we work, the educators behind me take their time to go to in-service trainings, to do volunteer work by giving food to our students and families on a basis that they need. And so they're constantly working. Not only are they attending classes to upgrade certificates, they're doing a lot of different things during those two months. So I just wanted to dispel that myth that we do get paid and we don't. The next thing I'd like to address tonight is the disparity in the salaries for our educators. Our educators in Sullivan County, and I have been one for over 30 years, no more, but I have been, and we have the same educational backgrounds. We have the same degrees. We put in the same amount of time. We go to the same in-services as our counterparts. And we don't make what our counterparts make. Let me give you an example. If you were in a company or in a business and you were at that time working and you had the same education, the same degree, you went and did the same job as one of your coworkers, but because that coworker lived on a different street or worked in a different part of that company, they made thousands of dollars more than you made. Do you think that's fair? I will leave that with you to make that decision. Thank you very much for the opportunity and God bless.
Next up, Jonathan Fields. Phil, welcome.
Hello, mayor, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it very much. I'm not a very political person, but I felt kind of compelled to speak after attending the last meeting. I've heard several times over the past months and even last week that the commission's budget is like a big pie and that everybody wants their biggest slice of pie possible. Sullivan County has been my home forever. It's where I work. I love living and working in this county. I'm proud of it. I'm proud to be from Sullivan County. I love everything that we've got going on here. In my opinion, we have an outstanding highway department. It works hard on our roads. We have an amazing sheriff and sheriff's department who supports us in our schools and does a fantastic job. We have an amazing school system. We do. We have an amazing school system full of amazing teachers and other employees as well. I work in this school system and I absolutely love what I do, and I'm very proud of what we have done the past decade or longer in Sullivan County for our students. That's why we all go to work every day. That's why we settle. That's why we don't complain because we love what we do and we love the kids that we work for. We work for our kids. As I, as an employee of this school district, I have watched firsthand our school board and our civil office staff cut and cut and cut and cut and cut to make our budget ends meet each school year. We've absorbed positions. We've cut back on spending. We've used other sources of revenue. We've tried to get grants. We use our federal dollars as best we can, but it is earmarked. When they tell us you have to spend it on X, you have to spend it on X. If you spend it on Y, they're going to come take it back from you and they're going to want it. We've done all of this while continuing to provide an even higher level of education services for our students. We're continually trying to improve our practice. We're trying new things in the county. We don't just do the same things over and over and over again. And trying new things, that costs money as well. When it's out with the old and in with the new, that costs a little money. We're continually trying to improve our practice and find better ways to teach our students. We are a loyal and dedicated group of teachers and students as well. Yes, there are teachers who leave us for better pay in different school systems, but we have a lot of teachers who haven't left us because they love our students. They love what we have and they love what we do in Sullivan County. I'm not here to advocate for a raise. I'm not here to beg for new carpet in our schools. I'm here to say that nobody in this room wants higher taxes. Nobody does. When taxes go up, you know, I own a house. It's going to impact me as well. I'm just here to discuss that pie that I hear people talking about because I keep hearing that, you know, the school system wants their biggest slice of the pie. Well, where I'm from, pie's a dessert. I love pie. You can have a look at me out there. I love pie. Pie is something extra. That's what comes after your meal. That's the extra stuff. That's a treat after you've been served your meal. No one in this room is asking for extra. What we're asking for is enough funding to run our school, to pay our custodians, our cafeteria staff, our secretarial staff, and our teachers a wage that is livable, a wage that is comparable to surrounding systems. And not just surrounding systems, but to surrounding other jobs. We lose custodians and we lose maintenance folks to other jobs, not just, not just school systems. We have got to work on this. We're asking that we're funded at a level that allows teachers not to spend hundreds of dollars at the beginning of every year to prepare their classrooms, to get ready for those little things. The little things, not paper clips and pencils, but the little things that kids need, that their parents and families can't provide for them, that we provide for them. No one of the things that we're asking for, nothing that we're asking for is pie. Nothing is extra. It is the meat and potatoes of education is what we're asking for. And right now, it feels like we're just having to fight for a seat at the table. We don't want that. We don't want pie. We want our meat and potatoes. Thank you so much. As I look around this room, look at the commission, every one of y'all should show your respect and listen to what I've had to say, and that means a lot to me. That means a lot to the folks in here tonight. Thank you. Balancing a budget, distributing money, that's a thankless task, and we appreciate you all doing it. Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, Lloyd Putney, Spore. I didn't recognize the name. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I'm up here because as a teacher, we always have a sign sheet.
Okay.
So I signed in. You want my real name?
Yeah, your real name and address for our electronic address.
Lloyd Madison Lineberry Putney.
Outstanding. Thank you.
I live at 800 Union Hill Street in Kingsport, Tennessee.
Thank you. Good to have you with us, if you will.
And I'm a teacher at Sullivan Central. I graduated from Sullivan Central a long time ago. I don't think that I can get up here and say anything any more eloquent than what's been said, but all I want to do is charge you guys. It's on you now. I think this is something that we need to do and we needed to do it for years. And I would appreciate y'all's consideration in that fact. This, this, I'm technica, technology, I'm even having trouble with words. I'm technologically challenged. This last year was almost unbearable for me, teaching, trying to teach online. I teach carpentry and electrical. It was a challenge.
A little extra funding for capital projects and that sort of thing in school can allow these guys to get the raise they need. I came up here tonight, kind of wanting to go off a little bit about the Finance Act. I hope that some of you guys seen that. That was a mistake. That needs to be rescinded and gotten rid of. It's strictly a way to usurp the school board when it comes to school projects. I'm not going to go too negative. These guys have been all positive. I think the fact that they're up here should show you what we need to know. I will say that when it comes to this county system, you know, over the past 20 years, I mentioned this at that meeting, a lot of capital project funding has come out of sales tax revenues, up to almost three bucks, three million bucks a year in some, in some years. That's funny that was recurring, that could have went to teacher pay. They've taken that hit over the years. You're not here, they're not here competing with Greene County and Hawkins County. We're sitting right in the aisle in between Kingsport, Bristol, Johnson City. Their salary shouldn't be competitive with, you know, where I'm from, Pickett County, Tennessee, or Overton County, Tennessee, or something like that. They have, they have groups all around them picking them off because they only have to drive 15, 20 minutes farther and they can make five, six, eight, $10,000 more a year. Sullivan County's got to kind of keep up with that or we're going to run into trouble. We had a commissioner say two years ago, when you guys were trying to cut two and a half million dollars per year out of the, out of the budget. Commissioner came up and said, "Look at Kingsport. They're kicking butt. What's going on in the county?" Well, what's going on in the county is the county has used a lot of their funding to help with capital projects over the years. The county's fighting the system where they've got Kingsport, Johnson City, Bristol. They get extra tax money from their cities. Allows them to elevate. The cities take care of a lot of their capital projects, whereas the county has to do it on their own. It's not fair. It is unfair, and I'm not complaining that it's not fair, but, you know, like I said, we're not Hawkins County. We're Sullivan County. We're sitting right in the middle of three drawn. All right? So we got to take care of it. And that's basically what I want to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes my list. And I just want to thank everybody that spoke up.
I broke down my name on the list. I was like number five on the list, and I don't want to happen to that.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I can't hear you. You'll need to...
I was like number five on the list.
Please come up. Please come up. I was just going to say, all of you were kind enough to come up here tonight and all of you stayed within the time limits that I suggested. And so we'll extend this a little bit longer. You're welcome, ma'am, if you'll give us your name and your address.
Sure. Angela Smith, Sales Row, Love City.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm here as a parent and a property tax owner. I just would like to say to leave the property tax as it is and don't depend on the sales tax revenues to remain high because of COVID money. This could cause a much higher increase in the future. It's not prudent or showing care to budget on sales tax revenue any variant certain time. We need a jail, but don't fund it on the backs of the school system for their, for the sakes of our children. In 2015, taxes were raised 27 cents, of which three cents were to go to the school system for renovations to maintain them, and that was taken back. On September 20th, 2020, taxes were raised again 12 cents to finance the jail bond. Out of this budget today, $0 go to school renovations from county commission budget, even though my taxes were being raised. The community is most definitely seeing results from the school board, like the beautiful new field at East High School that this commission didn't have to pay for. Yet, four commissioners on this board voted no to put it down. We are also aware that you commissioners voted to give $584,000 to connect East High to the sewer line on the new middle school, but you took that money back as well because they wouldn't connect a certain supersized sewer line and two commissioners of which voted no on the turf as well. Why are we carrying our feelings on our shoulders? That's my guess. This community is starting to fact check. Thank you.
Thank you. And Herschel, if you want to speak during public hearing. I will, let's go ahead. You all were kind enough to come up here tonight and we do, we're about 36 minutes into this, but you came up here. If you have some, if you'd like to address the commission, I'd like, we're happy to hear you. We don't want to cut anybody off. So that completes our list. I have two commissioners that would like to speak during public hearing, and that's allowable and, and an opportunity. So anybody else in the room that would like to address the commission? I appreciate the message you brought us. I'm sure the commission does. Don't overlook anybody. I will now close the public hearing. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. We've got this post between me and you and I didn't see you, so...
That's all right. I'll speak kind of loud so you can hear me that way. I'm sorry.
If you will, sir, if you will give us your name and address for our electronic address.
My name is Jerome Williams, Lili Williams. I'm actually from Johnson City, Tennessee, 3006 South Roan Street, but I network and work around this area. The reason why I'm coming up, I want to try to get some information about the schools that are closing. I came here to a board meeting before and I asked about some information about the schools that are closing, if they're going to be available for auction or for sale because I'm looking at the opportunity to try to do a film scope and also a community center. I was told to leave my information with the mayor's office, and I've done that multiple times. I've even called. I haven't gotten a phone call yet, haven't heard from anybody. I would just at least like to get recognized, at least tell me something. Whenever I'm not hearing from anybody, it kind of makes me feel like I'm not welcome or they don't want to hear what I want to bring to the table, which is an opportunity to help you to help bring jobs in the community in the area and also to just help build the community. Because what a lot of people may not realize is the film industry is a growing industry and people are doing films nowadays, not just with big cameras. They're doing it with cell phones, everything like that, where you've... where you are making anywhere from 2,000 to about 18,000 dollars a month, just off of what they're doing with brand companies. A lot of people may not realize that. And that's something that I want people to kind of see and notice, that we can bring something in this area that can help grow. And I'm sure with the film community and community centers, stuff like that, doing that, it will also provide ways that teachers can also get more money in training and teaching. There can be funds that can go towards them as well. That's my statement. Thank you all so much.
Well, thank you for coming. Let me, let me comment. We certainly welcome entrepreneurs in, in the county and you have gotten an answer. Our process is that if there is a school property, they must declare it surplus. Is that right, Mr. Chairman? The school board declared it surplus?
Yeah, I talked to Yulka, but they told me they're messing with the mayor.
You keep in touch with them and then if, if we, all the portion of it, we'd be happy to see you too.
Okay.
We welcome you here, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
The calls, we've got calls here that I can't sit around. We will close the public hearing now and go back into regular session. As a personal privilege, I have, Mr. Vance would like to address the commission from the well. And on a personal privilege, Mr. Vance, would you, would you want to do the well or at your desk?
I, I think I can do yours.
At your desk? Okay, we will... You recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like this to be considered under the public comment. I'm Mark Vance, 201 B Ray Drive, President of Tennessee. I appreciate you all's comments that you're referring to the true teacher's equalization pay. I want to explain something to the teachers, I also want to explain something to the taxpayers. This budget that we are considering, and the tax increase that we're having to consider, is not for education. It is because we are being required to build an 80 million dollar jail. The school board has agreed in the budget to reduce 6 cents off the general purpose tax rate, property tax rate, which is equivalent to about a million dollars from the Sullivan County school system in funding this year. Mr. Jones has stated that the school budget has the ability to do their teacher equalization raise without any additional new money coming from the taxpayers of this county. I have talked to a lot of citizens, today I talked to one that's here for nearly over two hours, to explain the way the county budget operates. And I want the teachers to understand the consideration of the budget that's being presented to us for teacher equalization is not requiring any additional money. So you are not here lobbying for you all to be treated equally and also asking the county commission to raise taxes. That's done and been taken care of. The county commission voted in September of 2020 by a majority of 16 votes to levy a 12 cent tax increase to fund an 80 million dollar bond to build a Sullivan County jail. Why are we having to build a jail? Because it has been studied for over 20 years of overcrowding jails. The county has been sued. The state has came in and told us that the, the inmates cannot continue to live in the conditions that they were living in. Why are we being forced to raise taxes to fund a jail? Because the state of Tennessee has not built a state prison in over 20 years. I defend this county commission because we are put into situations here to deal with more than just building a sidewalk or deciding on what side of the road that sidewalk needs to be built. In 2019 and 2020 budgets, the Sullivan County school system was 84 million dollars, and they spent 77 million. It's not fair to the taxpayers of this county to keep being overtaxed and the money not being spent. The Board of Education has done a good job of controlling their expenses. They have approximately 24 million dollars in reserves. There is going to be a lot of projects that the school system is going to have funding. And I want to tell the teachers this, hold the Board of Education accountable. They've got the money to do the things in the classroom. It's not the county commission that's not been funding our school system in a very good way for the last years. When the comptroller tells us that they're putting three and a half to four billion dollars in reserves each year, and Mr. Jones heard this same comment on the telephone with Brian Burton with the State Comptroller's Office, which all politics was removed. The facts were said. What was the budget in 2019 and '20 budgets? The answer was 84 million. What was the answer of how much did they actually spend? 77 million. What was their fund balance at the end of June 30th of 2020? 24 million dollars. This county commission has done a terrific job in funding education. This county commission is proud of our school system. We're proud of our teachers. But the conflicts between the Board of Education and this county commission has got to stop. We got to do the teacher equalization pay. You all are well deserved. But you don't need to be sitting here feeling like that you're causing the citizens of this county to have to raise taxes to give you all a very earned pay raise, because it's not you. And I want the citizens of this county to know this. If you want to know why the taxes are going up in this county, which we've already voted, the tax rate's done been set in this county. And that was done in September of last year. We voted, and this resolution will have to be rescinded, because this 12 cents in this resolution was being approved says it will be added on to the certified tax rate. So you want to talk about cutting taxes. The certified tax rate come in at $2.31, and the proposed budget has a tax rate of $202.40, which is actually 3 cents less than what we voted in September of last year. Here's another thing, to be able to pay for the jail, the school system was willing to give up 6 cents because we have been funding them very generously. They were willing to give up 6 cents, which helped us balance this budget. This budget amendment that I made in the Budget Committee was a compromise. It was a compromise of seeing where we could get to the point of doing two things. Well, maybe the same three things. One thing is representing the city of Bristol. I do not want to do anything to jeopardize or risk my school system in Bristol. And they were met, I discussed it with them. They presented the budget to their Board of Education, they went to their city council, they approved it with a 7 cent reduction in county property taxes, and that budget's been approved. We come back and there's two things, that's been, my objective is two things. And how do I know that we were going to be here one day? Because I've been around a long time and I'm an old timer, okay? I knew that one day we were going to be here and we were going to have the ability to do teacher equalization pay for our teachers. I knew that we would have money to be put into our county schools, that we have the best facilities in renovating schools. I've stayed here for 20 some years and heard teachers and parents call about water running out of the ceiling at East High School and trash cans sitting around everywhere. We want this county school system, we want our Board of Education to put money in our school facility. We want the number one best school in the state right here. We got the staff. But we are at a turning point in this county to turn our school system exactly where it should have been gone for 20 years. And we're in that situation now. Sure, it's going to be hard raising taxes, but we're not raising taxes for school system. We're raising taxes to build a jail. Why are we building a jail because of the state? You know, you all see, you can go back and Google Bristol Pearl Killian, they done a story for a whole week talking about the overcrowding condition at Sullivan County Jail. That's something we're being faced with. It's hard to explain. Some person said, "Well, you're taking money away from the school system to build a jail." Mr. Jones agreed to that. The Board of Education agreed to that. They understood where we were at. They understand how the county commission has been good to this school. They wanted to take 12 cents. 12 cents was too much of a cut. That's why I went to the compromise of 6 cents on property taxes and 9 cents, 6 cents reduction of education tax money and only increasing tax rate by 9 cents. And that way we can build the jail, we can meet that need. The school system has got funds in their budget to give the teacher equalization. They've got money set in their reserves that they can start renovating schools and improving our facilities. And all this other stuff, in my opinion, the personnel and all that stuff, it don't really matter to me. I think that we're at the right point in time to make this happen now. But I wanted to say that to you all, because I stayed here and I listened. I listened to you all talk about getting raises and you're deserving of raises. And I hear people talking about, "The teachers are down there lobbying for a raise and want to cost my taxes to go up." That's not true. But I wanted to get that off my chest to you all. And I appreciate what the job you all do.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. We're in a personal privilege now, Mr. Glover had asked, previous to the meeting, if he'd speak in a public session and I had asked him to go ahead and do it on a regular session, that I would recognize him. So, Mr. Glover, it's alright, I'll recognize you. You want to go to the well or the desk?
Yes, sir.
Recognized in the well. On a personal privilege, we don't put a time limit on our folks, so we want to hear what they have to say.
I won't turn my back on the commission because I want to...
Mr. Glover, you're recognized. I recognize your backs.
I'm lucky to tell, there, I mean, well, I do. But I, I think the commission... I, I want to tell you, I, we have... I serve with 23 other people in this room that deeply care about each and every one of you that's sitting in these seats tonight. And I care about each and every one of you that's sitting in these seats tonight. And I thank you for coming. It's great to see all of you here tonight. But I wish you would come on a regular basis so you could see and hear from us personally what we've done and what we've tried to do for education in this room. And I want to give you some numbers. And the numbers that I give you are from the state. And these numbers will be presented to you at the end of the meeting. We've got copies of these and we want each and every one of you to have this information. In 2018, school budget was 84,834,474. In 2019, it was 84,153,256. And in 2020, it was 83,243,969. In 2018, it was 15,996,190 left. In 2019, it grew from 15,996,000 to 20,585,000. And then in 2020, the fund balance grew from 20,585,427 to 24,593,220. So in three years, there were 8,597,000 dollars left over in school budget. First year that this new commission came in to office, and you can ask Mr. Bayman, and we can go back, and we can pull out the film and we can pull out the tape. When I saw how much money was left over and other commissioners in this room, I proposed a 2% raise for the teachers Sullivan County. And you know how I was addressed with that? I was addressed that I was being physically irresponsible to ask for... But that time, the school board, when I was told that I was being physically irresponsible, I was micromanaging the school department. A commissioner that provides y'all's funding, all 24 of us, was micromanaging the school department. Folks, it's taxpayer money. It's your money too. It's your money that you pay in. Then, that, that went to the wayside and the principal here that was talking about working through COVID. Next thing we tried to do, we tried to give every teacher and support staff $500 cash money to use any way you wanted to use. And at that time, Dr. Cox stood here and he told me that I was being physically irresponsible asking for that money. So see, if you folks would come and sit in with us, you could see firsthand what this commission has really been trying to do for education. Then, about a year ago, it was brought to our kitchen that they wanted to do a $500 for the teachers to buy materials for their classroom. I come back and said, "Well, why don't we give them $500? Look what they went through." They bought stuff out of pocket, they put stuff in their houses to, to do virtual learning. They've done, you know, unreal things so their kids could keep learning and their test scores will stay up. But you know what? That was shot down too. You, you guys could have bought gas, you could have bought supplies, you could have bought anything you wanted out of that money. It was your money. But they wanted to put it in, that the principal take the $500 and you guys go in and they tell you what you can buy or what you can't buy or what, what you need and deduct it from that $500. It shouldn't be that way. And every single commissioner that's sitting in behind me in this room, I know them. They care about teachers, they care about kids. We all do. This teacher equalization pay, we were never told how much money it was going to be. You know where I learned that? I learned it in the newspaper. 3.3 million to implement a teacher pay equalization plan. Commissioner Vance, what he just told you? It's in his year's budget. It's there. We have never, nev... The information that we asked for, we had to jump through hoops to get it. And that information that we asked for is for your benefit. It's for your benefit. This 8.8 million dollars that's been asked for, we want, we want accountability for that money because it's your money too. It's money that could be used for, for teacher raises. It's money that could be used in your classroom and for your children. That's, that's what we're asking for. This commission is not trying to penalize teachers. This, this commission is not, certainly not trying to penalize children. I've got three grandchildren, eleven are dead. And, and I know, we care. But please, start coming, sitting in with us. You know where you ought to be sitting? All of you, like you are tonight? At the next school board meeting. That's where you need to be sitting. Be sitting at the next school board meeting. And, and when we give you these papers tonight, saying, "Where's this money at? Where's this money gone?" We want our, we, a pie again, we want our piece of pie. And, and the meat and potatoes are in there. potatoes are in there. So, listen, we have, we have worked hard and we're going to continue to work hard. And, and the next two years, the school system is getting close to thirty million dollars in COVID money. Thirty million dollars. But we just want accountability and transparency. That's all we ask for. And I'm sure you guys do too. But numbers don't lie. This is what's been turned into the state and it's for you guys to see. And I hope that the next school board meeting, that you folks are sitting there, asking for your rates, we, we could already be probably at six or eight percent pay raise if we would have implemented this when we first came into office. The money's there. We okay the money and we send the money over and then we don't have any say-so of what they do with it. But you know what? Mr. Page said something a minute ago that I want to recognize. This private act, that money, we know exactly where that money's going to go and we're going to make sure that that money gets to the teachers, the raise that they deserve because it's there. And that's, that's, I mean, this has been bothering me and a lot of these other commissioners in here and the mayor and Larry Bailey, every single year that I've been here, it's bothered me because I know what's in here. You guys haven't been told what's in there. But tonight, you're going to have the information to take with you and go home and look over it and then you'll see where we moved. I appreciate everything you do for our children and our community. And if there's anything at all that any of us could do, please contact us. Glad to see you here tonight. I hope you come back. If, if, if you've been coming, it's not, it's the budget year, you'd see what we've been doing. But like Mr. Vance said, this property tax has nothing to do with the teachers' equalization pay. It's in this budget. And if I have to do an amendment, and these commissioners I think will support me, if we have to do an amendment to make sure that you all get that raise, my gosh, we'll put it in, we'll put it in there and we'll send it back. So, you'll know it's there. And if they don't give it to you, we'll be sitting over our wiki at the next meeting wanting to know why. Thank you so much for your time and thank you all for coming.
Thanks for your time. We've been here and it looks like we're going to have some pass out. I want to make sure the clerk has everything that's passed out here tonight. So, we're going to take a fifteen-minute break. Please, please be back here at seven twenty-three in your seats. So, we're in recent.